...map, you go accordingly because one of the reasons we try not to, to deviate from that policies because even want, everyone's gonna come and asking you to do favor or to, it's happened, how come not my street, why not my street, you know, so on and so forth. I, I believe we should follow the same guidelines that we had before. You know, when these, these monies come in monthly and until you have enough money to create, depending on what street you're doing to, is that correct, Mr. Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong? If, if depend on what street, if you don't have that money in your budget, you can't, you know, work on it until it's, you know, you have that, you know, so much money to create or, you know, complete that road. And, and I think he has, I think Mr. Miller had a valid point and the weather, the cost, all that filters in also, even though we might be doing our own work. But as far as the, you know, the exception to rule, I, I disagree with that.
Can I ask, can I ask, how do you pick which street is going to get done?
Currently, we just finished up this master plan that we have in place and before there was no set schedule of what roads were done. When I first came into office, we had projects that had been started and not completed, so those are the, those are the areas that we worked on.
In addition, if, there were exceptions of moving back and forth if redevelopment came in or, or a new area needed that, so now that we've got the master plan, now the only thing is the, the timeline, the cost, and just educating the, the councils of Oregon, like we talked about, what, what months of the year are not good for paving and when you can and how many personalities are we in-house or we contact.
Well, 'cause I know one of my, you, you know where we live, right, correct? Mr. Johnson? You live in Oakland?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Because looking at that master plan, the street, what is the street behind us?
Oh. That was actually on the list.
That was projected to be worked on first. Ours is in much worse shape than that, so that's why I'm asking, how do you pick?
There was no set standard because we have this now, the recommendation, so with this recommendation, we'll start associating the cost to them and then present that back to the council, either that we wait till we collect the money to, to get that going or, you know, we go out and borrow.
Well, I, I think the point there is it was just that to develop the timelines based on projected costs and revenues and budgets so that we know, we can project from a monthly basis relatively accurately what month we're gonna receive X number of dollars in street maintenance tax and what month we're going to do that, and can develop the schedule based on those projections, as well as based on the, the, we know in the winter months we don't normally pay roads, we can appropriately set those things in the timeline. What this is going to do is give the citizens some preparation. Is my road gonna get fixed this year, is it gonna be next year, is it two years down, three years down the road? But it's gonna give them some sense, based on engineers' recommendations and priorities of where I'm standing in the master plan. I think this is really a good thing, not only for the city staff, but also for the citizens of the community.
Yeah, I just have a question. When y'all talk about redoing the streets, are you talking about when you go in there and re-pay the street, are you gonna put in curbs, are you gonna fix drainage issues? Like take over here by the tennis courts, it's just that open pit? And what about, like, there's somebody there's gonna get sidewalks? I mean, have y'all looked at any of that, like the curbing sidewalks?
There's actually, if I'm not mistaken, I think most curb is, if, if that street is gonna be built or worked on. I know that they meet with the owner, am I correct, Mr. Johnson? And the city will complete that if they choose to, is that correct, like curbing?
They, they answer from Mr. Gleason, I think it's Scott Gleason back there. It is correct, yes, we are looking at from, from the point forward, any road that we've done in the last year or so has included curbing. If there's a drainage issue, we're addressing those also. And the curbing on a voluntary basis was set in place for some time that the citizens could, at their own cost, put a curb in and it offset the cost and possibly that would move their street up on the priority list, but that's not the case anymore.
Okay, the other thing, Mr. Gleason, that was another big, pardon?
Oh.
Look, the sidewalks, the drainage, those pieces have to be considered in this ten-year master plan that I'm discussing because we do realize we have some significant drainage issues in the city. We have some, some areas of our community that I bullet, I'm told are existing the flood zone. And, so we've got a lot of issues to address that, and the one thing that I learned most, and I think everybody in the council that participated in the workshops, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, is that we have a lot more questions than we actually have answers to.
Yes, I did, Madam American. And that was just in the original motion, Mr. Miller, I think he wanted procedures for exceptions or procedures for revisions, maybe that's a better way of saying it, that needs to be put into the final argument, and I think that needs to be part of the manager's recommendation of what our citizens, Mr. Miller, want, is an opportunity to have, would be the revisions and some basis for exceptions and updates. And maybe that's implicit in the motion, but I think it ought to be clear that the process with the manager and council, you, make a judgment from whether, considering the then- or whatever, I think you wanted that part of the management.
Okay, so I, I agree with you, Mr. Rosenberg, and in discussions with the city manager, it's certainly gonna make his job a lot easier to, to be able to say, this is the policy that we follow, this is the procedure for exception. So should I restate the motion now that it's?
I recommend that you do that because clearer from the top, it's the mayor and makers of the motion, he will be making the motion, but I don't, the senator, he'll accept that as an amendment.
Even though that it's already been voted on, yeah, okay. So amend?
I think clarity helps you get this thing started and where you're looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. So I would move to amend my original motion to include direction for establishing policies and procedures for revisions to that schedule. Do we need to revote on that amendment?
Okay, now we're gonna go back to item 2B. Consider that to direct the city manager to freeze all city expenditures with the exception of those required for essential city services.
Thank you, Madam American. And as I've mentioned, we have a number of big issues on the horizon for the city based upon current need, based upon projected growth. And until we can identify what those costs are, how they're going to be funded, we certainly have to tighten the belt of the entire city. And although not an indefinite direction, but as we begin to fill in the gaps to the master plan and begin to get information, we can change this direction. But at least for the short term, I think it is necessary for the council to clearly direct the city manager to limit spending on the, except for those things that are required for the operation of our city. And as a result, I've put this item on the agenda. I know it's gonna bring some discussion and amongst the council and amongst some citizens. But I will make the motion to direct the city manager to freeze all city expenditures with the exception of those required for essential city services as determined by the city manager. And I'm gonna make the comment to that motion by adding that little piece as determined by the city manager. There's a great deal of expenses operating in a, a city, many of which I am not aware of, and many of which most of this council is not aware of, and we employ a city manager to do that. And I want to trust his direction and I want to trust his consideration for those expenditures.
Citizens comments?
You point out that the, they're leaving this to the city manager, and I think that's what's been done for the last four years. And each, each, each city manager given a, a map to follow, and Mr. Johnson actually has carried that through very well. As far as the expenditures, you know, that we talk about the certain things here that we want done, and all, all this is actually in a plan, it's always been in a plan. The problem, the thing that you're gonna find out, gonna have trouble with is it actually, you know, you, you say, you know, we're, we're looking for the projected cost, and we keep going back to where they're gonna cost. But there's, you know, your, your street maintenance tax is collected, you're, now unless you're gonna borrow money again to, to add to that, you know, that's the only way you can get any more money. The sewage plant's same thing, unless you're gonna borrow money to do that, you're gonna, you know, unless you find places to save, and, and I think that's what Jim's, you know, here is, is, is any expenditure. I don't know what expenditures other than city services that we use. Anyway, I don't think you go out of your way to buy things that, or get things that we don't need, is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
That's correct.
So I mean, I, I see why that is even on here, I mean, we follow the same procedures.
My only concern, why are you doing, you go ahead, sir. I don't know we can bring up that expenditure we have of over forty, fifty thousand dollars that, we're not in the business of that.
I would, I would recommend that you do, sir, that way I can get specifics from the council.
Because I, I wanna make it clear with Mr. Rosenberg that, that we could talk about it, or it's gotta be on the agenda, or, I mean, it's part of the, the mispending of money. So I don't know if we should wait or, what's your recommendation?
Is there a, are we spending money somewhere we're not supposed to?
Well, the city of Florida's got a big, a big spend that you're, I don't know, can I say, or can I wait, what's your recommendation?
Can city expenditures be defined that need to be frozen?
If you wanna sort of freeze them, what the motion is, the way this item is framed on the agenda, is to give this authority direction to the manager. And the thing to reason for that, the workshop that we postponed, I think it is, is that he now has a controller, the controller and he has permitted the council or the next of the, of the first meeting in the mid-year, to bring in the monthly, to bring in the check register, and to have you apply each month of exactly what's getting spent. And what I think this motion is directed to is you've got five positions open right now, and one of the things he would consider is not filling those positions, one of the other items that came up yesterday, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
One of the things that came up yesterday was the extravaganza, and one of the issues that...
Mr. Rosenberg, if you take one step forward, I think everybody can hear you, because the wall turns into a damn...
Sidestage, don't hide.
Don't hide. But anyway, one of the things that came up yesterday was the matter of the extravaganza. It's a separate budget item, but nevertheless, it's an item that questioned, was questioned or raised about. And so if you're trying to answer your question, I think any item can be discussed tonight under this agenda item, regardless of the amount. Now, if you're asking, can you put a cap on what the manager can authorize, the charter says twenty-five thousand, subject to state law. And I think the way we proceeded in the past was anything that required a bid came to the council. I don't think we're intending this to go to bids at this point, we're talking about just simply getting you the monthly expenditures and having them to be controlled by the manager until such time as you have more information where you can make those decisions yourself more carefully.
Did I can?
Am I answering your question or not?
No.
That's all right.
I'm sorry.
The issue that, that the councilman wants to bring up is an issue that I wanted to bring up because previous council assigned the duties of running the event center to the office of the city manager and putting on events whenever possible. Got the agenda items where the manager's report was, this is what we're doing, Summer Country Music Series, we're doing the barbecue cook-off, we're doing, all of these events are going, and the council was all in agreement at that time. At the budget, well, or, he said budget, at our workshops, council manager workshops, the issue was brought up, well, why are you doing the extravaganza, or what, or should we continue to do that? And I said, well, the city council at the time authorized it. If you're gonna change it, then I need for you to tell me, don't do it, because I'm doing, I was doing as directed by the city council at that time. If I'm gonna change from that or deviate from that, then I need for you to...
So would that be all activities then, correct, not just signaling out?
No, no.
It's up, it's up to the council.
To me, it's just a, a red flag that came up here is because I don't remember voting on this, and you know I missed some, so, but I think, I think the agenda's where, I don't think we ever voted for the extravaganza, and I can speak a little bit on extravaganza with no, why didn't the charter anything, Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The only thing that kinda lit up, I, and I have a problem with these extravaganzas going on, but last year we lost sixteen thousand on extravaganza. And quote me if I'm wrong, the only information that I have, that I have received, we're down to lose, to lose more money. Because I wanna bring it out that Little Joe is getting thirty thousand dollars, I have never seen Little Joe pay, be paying thirty thousand dollars for his and Paul's services, thirty. The Revolution, eight thousand. Rodeo Polito, five thousand. Best western for a hotel, a couple of hundred. Security, one thousand. Program, seven hundred and fifty. And we're still not at the sound, we're still not at the table decoration, we're still not at the, at the, at the meal that they're supposed to serve, I think the meal we had a, a cold here for eight thousand dollars. I mean, we're looking at about an event of fifty to sixty thousand easy. As of today, that I know of, or yesterday that I knew of, we sold ten tables. Right now, they paid Little Joe fifteen thousand, half of the thirty already. We're gonna lose that already because we'll do the deposit for canceling that. But I'm saying, okay, if, if the, if, if we have the money to do it, I think HEB gave us ten thousand dollars and I think they sold ten tables, I think we have a total of, I don't know, fifteen thousand. But we paid off already, we already lost seventeen thousand, okay? And we still have, without the sound and without the food and without everything, just the bands itself, we owe the bands twenty-seven thousand dollars. We sold ten tables so far. I mean, I know we can sell in the, in the last week, but are we not to lose this time thirty, forty? This is, this is what I'm talking about. And, and I want extravaganza, I want the people to have a good time and all everything, but if we had to sponsor, and, and we have the same bands we had last year, the same band, same people, and we know we lost sixteen thousand last year, we tell the man, you know what, I can't pay you fifteen, but give me five a break here, or pick up a sponsorship, or do whatever it takes, and, and we shouldn't have had that much of a problem. But what gets to me is who authorizes, and I'm still trying to think who authorizes. I asked Mr. Johnson, yes, I'm not trying to put Mr. Johnson on the hot seat, but I asked him, who are the contract? For a week, yeah, they have ten days, by law, ten days will provide it, but come on, somebody can give us a copy of two cheats. Here's, the, the contract we're signing June and September, give me the copy, that's all I'm asking for. And, and they, they, the copy showed up, I don't know, like at six o'clock or seven o'clock last night. And you know, right now, what do we do? And I'm not saying we're cancelling today, I'm just saying, what are we gonna do? And, and this is the part that, that if the, you know, Mr. Johnson, his job is to say, okay, Mr. Mayor, council, y'all want this extravaganza? And he says, no, I don't think so. But if we're gonna override it and say you're gonna do it, and now we're gonna fire, I'm not saying that's what they said, but, but you gotta say, man, look, I'm spending seventy thousand dollars on a dance, that I only sit a thousand people, and I'm only gonna make fifty thousand dollars from the city. Who doing this math? And that's my question.
If I can have some time.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Florida City Council Agenda, Special Meeting Monday, July eighteen, twenty-eleven. And the copies of that, in attendance, council members Jesse Flores, Cherry Castillo, John Guerrero, Johnny Gomez, city manager Andy Johnson, city secretary Margaret DeOyas. On this council agenda is when CNA, with respect to recommendation of the president of Florida Corporation, city manager is financed, uh, the city to assume responsibilities of day-to-day operations and management of the Florida Civic Center, including maintenance of separate records of accounts delivered throughout variety, joint signature authority for operation, maintenance of set accounts and establishing effective dates. At that point in time, the direction from the council, everybody authored, uh, for the except, with the exception of the new mayor and this, uh, council member, were aware of what was going on. And regular meeting Thursday, March twenty-second, twenty-twelve, was the first agenda that I found on the manager's report, which is a requirement from the previous city council to say, you give us a report of what's going on. I, I got the agenda, I looked it over, I looked over minutes, and thank God for Wilson County News and their video, I pulled up the video on YouTube, of all places, where I was, where I was asked by council members, what events are going on at the center? And I stood up there and I said, these events are going on, the Summer Country Music Series, the, uh, the barbecue cook-off is coming up, Carolyn Palazzo stepped up and said this is going on. And I looked over and I said, Cherry, what are you doing? She said, well, I'm part of the cook-off. And I said, Margaret, what are you doing? She said, the holiday extravaganza, third year. No, no, it just didn't come out of the blue, third year, and everybody knew about it. And that's the only argument that I have, hold on, sir, that's the only argument that I have when statements that, who authorized it? You did. But the issue is, my, my, my question to you on this and, and the budget workshops, I have no argument, you tell me, you cancel it, I'll cancel it. And the staff is here to give you any further information on that, but I was doing what you're only doing.
I don't think, excuse me, for the councilman, I don't think anybody, certainly not in my motion am I questioning the actions of the city manager, I'm certain that he was following the direction that he was given. However, when events at the event center, like the Ray Price Concert, have to be supplemented to the tune of in excess of sixteen thousand dollars of hotel motel tax, when events like the holiday extravaganza are going to have to be supplemented with hotel motel tax, and we have all of these challenges facing the city, okay? We have to make decisions about, do we write off the seventeen thousand dollars that we have already spent on the holiday extravaganza in potential of losing fifty thousand? Okay, or, you know, when last year's event was a loss of sixteen thousand dollars, and I look at some of these numbers, I'm scared to death. Uh, the numbers that I see, not counting sound, not counting food, not counting alcohol, not counting hospitality, not counting ci, employees for this event, is going to cost the city in excess of fifty thousand dollars. And the reports I've seen say we have only received ten thousand dollars in donation from HEB and sold forty-two hundred dollars worth of tickets. I would contend we need to cut our losses at this point. We discussed a, a little bit about this, that, that this motion had to be pretty specific and because of contracts, and I would amend my motion, okay, that we not only freeze city expenditures, with the exception of those required for essential city services, but that we also, as determined by the city manager, then we also freeze the spending of hotel motel tax on events.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Greg Henry, you mentioned that the council knew about the event, but they, did they know about and approve the cost of the event?
Those directives were given to the city manager and that's what the city manager's obviously...
With no limits on the cost?
The issue with the hotel motel tax money is to bring heads to that. Everybody knows, or if you don't know, the chamber members do. The issue is not what you spend there, is it bringing people in? That's what the, the specific use for the hotel motel tax is. So is it a loss? How many times at the chamber did we have events and there was no money made? But it's the issue of utilizing that money to bring them.
The taxpayers get stuck with that.
But that's, that's hotel motel tax.
That's why you had a problem, there's no oversight there on expenditures.
And, and another issue, sir, is that the hotel motel tax money, if it's frozen, and approved by the council, that's specific to one thing, that can't be used for ways where people plan a street, it can't be used for anything other than that specific issue, which is bringing people to our town, and there's a two-step process of, you have to ensure that there are people staying at the hotels and that it's utilized for a specific banking function.
Well, help me figure this out then. So if you go over and you lose money on the deal, who has to pick up the tax? The hotel, hotel motel tax?
It comes on a hotel motel tax.
Nothing comes out of the city at all?
Well, it's, it's part of the city. All of that money is oversight by the city.
So no other taxpayer money from anything else goes into that?
Hotel motel tax.
So if you lose it?
I think his point, when we have employees out at the event center, we're not using hotel motel tax to pay their salaries.
It's utilizing concession money, utilizing door money, whatever.
So that's not coming out of budget, not the, not the actions of the event manager out there or...
Whoever's responsible for the, if that was the right to run the...
Sure, but, but...
Well, I've got one more. Is the event center a profit-making business or not?
It's not, it's never gonna be a profit-making, it, it needs to sustain itself.
Does it sustain itself since you don't?
Thank you.
With events, correct?
When the hotel motel tax money comes in, that's what goes in.
And don't get me wrong, I'm from the events, small events that we have here, all of this, but how are you gonna compare seventy thousand dollars to one of these smaller events? Yeah, we need to bring the people in, but just to say, Little Joe, Little Joe has never received, he don't even, I don't think he ever seen thirty, thirty thousand dollars. You know, we get up to as low as eight, ten thousand dollars. You know, we can probably call and negotiate and say, well, but you already paid him fifteen thousand, he's picking the other fifteen. So you know, things like this is, is, and, and another thing, I asked for the contract, you sign the contract, and, and everybody's saying, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, until somebody walked in here, small young little girl, brought a folder in, and that's when we got the, you know, things like that, if we ask for something, just give it to us.
Sir, I give you the information that you...
Last night.
When excess information like we talked about, I get you everything.
Okay, but I asked you, Mr. Johnson, how much, how much did this cost? And you said, I don't know, and your signature's on the contract.
Councilman Morales, you specifically asked me for that information.
Yes, sir.
First time you can ask.
But I had asked you the day before, then Mr. Miller, and then the mayor had asked you for it, and you said, no.
No, sir. You asked me that information.
Anyways, I'm not, I'm trying to be the one who reflects on you and ask a question for the city, for them and the taxpayer, that we can't be having events like this just because of council. You should also say a recommendation, say, no, council, it's too much money. But anyway.
That's not what the, what the council of, of.
And here it is again.
There must be something wrong with my.
Earn it all.
Talk loud.
What are the consequences for the monies that we give the Chamber of Commerce? Although we don't give them a lot today, but they're going to, from the hotel motel tax. Are there consequences, isn't that where the money comes from?
Well, the motion, the motion says.
No, no, I'm asking, because you added.
Spent on, on events. No hotel motel tax on events.
Well, the chamber has events, so how do you define that?
Uh, the chamber receives no money in the, uh, hotel motel, it's a visitor and tourist.
I'm sorry, I meant the tourist department, I'm sorry, I, correction. I'm at the tourist department, sorry, okay. How old is a factory tourist department? Sorry, thank you.
The question is to me, is, is, it's a question that only Mr. Vipon can answer.
But that's what I'm saying, if it's frozen, then you can't give them.
Well, the company's gonna be expended from hotel motel tax, that's the direction of the.
Well, and that's why we shouldn't add that piece to the motion. That's my opinion. But secondly, can, uh, Mr. Johnson, can you at some point, so we can see the actual numbers, give us a profit and loss, uh, statement on all of the events that are sponsored by the city?
The previous from, from.
Mm-hmm, yes, because that, because we can determine whether or not.
But I, I believe that's one of the, the issues that you may have on your freeze for, uh, a, a certain period of time to get information that you request on that before you go forward, is that correct?
Certainly, uh, Mr. Johnson, you know, many things we asked about in the workshops. One of the things that you pointed clearly to today is that the previous council has given you the direction of running the event center. It is my opinion, and this isn't the forum to do it, but he's not a trained event planner. Uh, you're, you're, we're, we're not trained marketing people. We're not trained contracts for, for, for getting with the event people. We need to really look at how this city is doing business. We identified a tremendous number of, of, of shortfalls that, that we have that, no, not necessarily shortfalls, but challenges that this council has if this city's going to move forward, and we're going to meet the growth requirements. This is not free spending indefinitely, this is free spending. Stop spending on events until we can get a hold of where we want to go as a city. Then we can answer the question, what is the function of the 4A Board? What is the best management procedure of the event center? Where do we need to be looking for alternative funding sources to build a delta? You know, do we need to be raising taxes? Oh, there's a bad word. Or do we need to be looking at water rates? Or do we need to be looking at a bond issue? Or do we need to be looking at other loan issues? How do we solve all of that? And, and with all of those things looming in, in the future, and not knowing how we're gonna answer those questions of funding, we have to stop every penny that is not necessary to be lost, if you will, be it hotel motel tax. We may have to go on an entirely different marketing plan of this city, if we're gonna do that. I hope not. But that's something, until we know those answers to those questions, we can't spend the money today. And that's what this motion is about. It is not an indefinite motion of freezing spending. But let's grab a hold of what we got and keep it until we know where we're gonna go. And if we cannot determine where we're gonna go, if we don't know where we're at. And the reality is, we don't know exactly where we're at today. We've got too many questions to answer.
You're exactly right, that's why I'm asking for profit and loss on each one of the projects that the city sponsors.
And we will get that to you, but the motion is to freeze all spending and no extravaganza.
Or no, no activities, period.
No activity, period.
It's either.
The reason I asked the question, and I tried to ensure to Councilman Castillo.
Step forward, Lou.
I understand your amended motion.
Step forward, Lou, he can't hear you.
As I understand your amended motion, your amended motion is directed to putting a freeze or putting a limit, and that's the question I'm asking on what's proposed. Are you saying to go forward on the extravaganza within a budget surgeon that pays its way? Or are you saying stop it totally for this year on your amended motion?
The amended motion says freeze spending of hotel motel tax on events, period.
Okay, that means stop, stop.
Is the mo- before we? That's my, my question is, before we call for citizens' input, do we have to get a second on the motion?
I haven't voted yet. My, my only concern is, here we're talking about not hiring even the employees that the parks might need or what.
That's right. Not hiring the employees that we need.
Okay, let's, okay, yeah, we gotta clarify this piece first. Okay, so I restate, the amended motion or just the amendment to the motion?
Amendment to the motion defines, we all know what we're doing.
The amendment to the motion was to freeze the spending of hotel motel tax on events.
Specify all events.
For which the hotel motel tax would be expended?
Correct.
Okay, that's in second, all right, is the guy from down there?
Yes, I think there was a couple of questions out there. Ms. Stevens, did you have? That's okay, mine's so minor.
I'd, much criticism of adding things that are not on the agenda. And that is serious, that is really adding something that's not on the agenda.
What, in reference to?
So, Mr. Rosenberg?
So, are you saying it's not amended?
I'm here.
It's not on the agenda, right? You're expanding on the agenda. Now, isn't that a violation of the meeting rules?
I am sure, if you look at it with me, then freezing all expenditures.
That's right.
Okay, that's an expenditure.
Okay, but you're, you're made an addition to that.
No, I'm making it specific.
No, you made an addition. I don't think you can do that.
So, can just add a clarity to the motion?
I had the same question.
You added two parts.
There's objections from your constituents, sir, that were adding to the motion. In my opinion, what you mean is specific about what you want restricted, and not leaving this item to management's discretion.
And Mr. Miller did amend his first amendment motion.
That's right. And that's the motion that's on the page, and it was called a dance, and you amended it.
This might be beating a dead horse, but just for my clarification, uh, Councilman Miller, by your amended motion of freezing the hotel motel tax, I know you said for any, uh, events. So, can I assume that some monies will still go to the tourist center? Or does that freeze that, even with the thought of increasing that in the future?
I cannot speak to increases or, or actions that the council will take in the future, okay? I was trying to be specific in the motion for the use of hotel motel tax on events. If in the opinion, and I'm gonna, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this motion and this directive gives the city manager the discretion on expenditures for those that are, in his opinion, essential city services. If visitor and tourism funding is an essential city service in the city manager's office, then those, according to this motion, he'll be able to make those expenditures.
Now, I have a comment left, too. And I'm stepping forward. If we have an existing contract, we discussed this with the controller and the manager and a couple of the council members yesterday. If we have an existing contract outside the realm of extravaganza, and the manager and the controller will take that into account with determination of what's an essential event. Thank you. We have a contract in the chamber, that's why I mentioned.
No, we don't. It's not, that should be.
We do have an agreement in verbal form with.
What would that agreement be in early?
One of you are gonna have to define it, because it's never with.
There's no, there's no agreement.
There's no written agreement, and the only issue was the expense of hotel motel tax, when they needed it for something that would put in a request, would need X amount of money, and this is for, for this.
Specific.
Specific.
By the time forty-four, I mean, if we're, we're running all these activities and, 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 you know, what people fail to see is exactly how that day, in that day, like for instance, let me give you an example, the Opry. You know, you might not make too much money, but it brings people in from other cities, and that's what your main objective is, is to bring people to your city, to recognize that, you know what, you have something here, regardless of who it is, if you're definitely. You gotta realize that on that day, I'm sure, sales fluctuate within your city, and that's what you're actually missing out on, is that, that, uh, you know, the splat that you can't capture, the monies you can't capture, the people coming in, putting gas, stopping for ice, giving whatever they're doing. You know, those things are important, not only that, but the, the exception of, of, the, uh, you bring nori to, to your city, and the, the function of people meeting and socializing. And, you know, that, that's the things that, that you're gonna, you know, we're not looking to taking into effect. On these days, I'm sure, I'm sure on these days, that your sales tax does fluctuate and increase. So, I mean, it, you know, you know, we're, we're, we're missing the fact that, you know, we're actually using it as a tool to not only the chamber, but the city, you know, the 4A, you know, and, and the other, you know, function or other people in depth.
All I can say is, we give you how much, fifteen thousand? Seven thousand. And if we're gonna lose forty, or I'd rather give you forty more, and you're trying to bring more people in, other different ways.
I agree.
Instead of just saying, here, we'll take thirty, and Florida, we'll see you next year.
Well, what you're saying, it's not seven thousand or ten thousand, it's not okay to lose forty, it's the same concept.
No, you're missing the whole point, Mr. Johnson. No, you're missing the point. The thing is, we're already saying, you know, we're already projecting that we're, that we're having so much money more when all these other motels come. We're gonna make hundreds, over a hundred thousand dollars. But we wanna give y'all seven to promote Florida City Event Center.
We'll give them ten, we'll give them fifteen.
I don't know. But, but, but at one time, I think it was seventy thousand, wasn't it?
About a little over six.
But that percentage was taken three years back.
Right.
And I'm not even gonna go, you know, you gotta remember, who took it away? Who took that percentage away?
You did, you did.
I did, I wanted to get it.
I was not here that time.
You know.
I was on the open, I was not here. But that's, that's, that's near here or there, that's not here or there, okay? What I'm trying to tell you is, we tried to reinstate that in, that increase. We tried to reinstate that for the chamber. Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we try to reinstate it?
Yes, we tried.
We were looking at what, and remind, and let me just remind people, what, what, what the, uh, when we put Johnson, Mr. Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong, when you took over the 4A, or, or, and we asked you to audit, because we're gonna audit, you remember that in June? When we did that, we had audits planned for FEDC, 4A, and, and people seem to, to think that, okay, well, you know what, that happened at a certain other time, and, and, you know what, because of, of the people of Florida. No, we had already planned that. When he took over, we had, we, there was issues with the monies, am I correct? We did extensive research, we, we put him in, in that position, so he could monitor those finances. And let me say this, before, all I heard was the white elephant, the, the, you know, you got names of how much money we're losing, Mr. Johnson, in the last year, or Sherry Pollitt, if y'all may, have we made the payment? Yeah. Has that been, one of the reasons why is because we didn't sit around and, 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 you know.
Refinance.
No, no.
We financed twice, and we're ready to finance again.
No, no, what you're trying to explain to you is, again, if I can talk, then I'll let y'all talk, sir. Really, I mean, I'm just asking, you can respond to me if you want. But when, when we, when we did that, the hotel motel tax, we didn't have the monies to, 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 um, to complete that, to make that payment. So, instead of, you know, using it as a sword, we said, you know what, what can we do to fix it? Hence, came the new hotels and motels. Instead of, you know, worrying them, I'm just throwing it and saying, giving it to this black guy, we said, what can we do to fix it? And that's how we did it. We brought in new hotels, we, we thought about, okay, we bring more heads to bed, we bring more activities. If, if the chamber gets involved, you know what? And that's the problem we have right now, is the unity of everyone. And I'm sorry to say that, but it's true. And, and, and you might not realize it, but whatever you can do for your community, regardless of whether you're gonna lose money or not, I'm not saying you can do seven, or fifty, or thirty, or ten dollars. I'm just telling you that it has to be across the board. So, if you're gonna do it, do it across the board. That's it, you're gonna save it, save all of it?
And my only concern, again, going back to the, the employees that Mr. Johnson made, where is that gonna fall at?
Just, just to my discretion, according to the motion that.
So, you're okay, I mean, the discretion.
Other than the hotel motel tax specific, the rest, I'm gonna consult with the controller and say, can we afford that, and that's something that we can get by without buying, which is something that we've done already in preparation, because with you, that, that was a, a focus of the new council saying, you know, cut back as much as you can till we figure out what direction we're headed. So, she, she specifically, uh, is loved by all the employees, but she doesn't know the council.
Mr. Johnson, we, we actually had forecasted a certain amount for hiring those individuals, is that correct? At last year's budget? We had, we had forecasted that, and we had actually, we actually had, had prolonged it, so it wouldn't affect us in, in the budget. We had actually set it further, and, and I'm just saying, you know, we're talking about expenditures, right? So, we had actually pushed that forward to hiring them at a latter, at a latter part of the year. And mind you, we had already, sixty thousand dollars was very relevant to hiring these people that we shy away from, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, there's issues that, you know, y'all bring in some force, but those issues were actually forecasted in the budget, and it was taken away. It was about the same council. So, you know, you know, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You finished?
Yes, your question.
I just, I suggest that, uh, we have a new mayor and a new council, that y'all have more workshops in whatever area you need, and get all the information out, and get all the groups that you need to gather information from, and make the best decisions on the expenditures that you're gonna make. And, uh, give the city manager more direct, uh, one direction, so he can make the appropriate decisions to spend the money, the money much more wisely, and give him also, if you have to, set seating or, or whatever revisions y'all gotta do, you know, do it, you know. you know, unified and, you know, don't talk about small things, you know, talk about the important issues, you know, and compromise and, and get the best for the citizens the money, you know, all this stuff that, you, you just need more, more unity and, and you guys need to have more workshops, you know, get, get everything ironed out, you know, to work effectively for the public and so I.
Mr. Jazin, I have one more question, please. Do we use hotel motel tax for the cook-off, the fall fest, the lighting ceremony, the Christmas decor, the Christmas party for the employees, the summer country series? All of those are city?
Christmas party for employees, no.
Okay, but for all the others, you use?
Yes, any, anytime we, we have an event and we can utilize specific, that hotel motel tax, yes.
So we don't have any monies for these, that means they're gonna all be canceled?
They're all gonna be, the.
They're all frozen.
Well, can we kinda, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's why I would like, first of all, to see a profit and loss statement before they were canceling the, freezing the hotel motel tax.
I kinda, I just wanna say that, that maybe we can cap it, you know, saying that in the, in the average, we've been spending on these smaller events for the time being, or I, I mean, right now at this point, I, I'll probably make a, I'll make a motion right now to table this to. Okay, go ahead.
That's a preferential motion, councilman, if you make a motion to table, it's gonna be dealt with.
I second it.
I don't, I don't wanna table, but.
To me, I wanna table it only because we've been talking about, you know, you're not comprehending, but I'll tell you what, I wanna make the right choice and I think that's what we wanna get and I don't think Mr. Jazin's gonna go way out of his head to go make these checks out and, I'm hoping not, but.
You know, give direction, this is, this is already in.
Well, what's your recommendation, you wanna go ahead and deal with it?
My recommendation is that you give me direction, because if not, those contracts were signed because of the previous council's authority and they will move forward, if you're gonna cancel it, then we'll lose whatever money, deposits, uh, breaking agreements or whatever, you just need to tell.
Okay, well, I don't know, we could do a formal motion to cancel that one item, but I'm a little here with, with, I don't wanna freeze the, the spending on.
No, and, and I, I understand.
So I guess if we give you the, the directive.
Events is, is a motion that you made, correct?
Councilman Maronis, I think in lieu of tabling this issue, because we need to. True to understand what's going on, that's the purpose of this motion, by freezing spending until we have the, the entire picture tabling it, I think would be a mistake. Councilor, is there, how would you recommend the wording of the motion as Councilman Maronis has requested?
I have to answer you, I have to answer you that presumably you need to go down the motion to table. If that's what you want, and then go on and ask you the question after you've taken the action on the motion to table.
I'll take the motion to table.
And it was seconded, that's why it's a preferential motion.
Mr. Maronis has made a motion and it's been seconded by Ms. Castillo to table item two G, the hotel motel. We're still gonna have the issue, I think, of the extravaganza because these girls have got to proceed with what they have pending, which is catering programs, so we need to decide.
A new motion can be made once this one is taken. I just have one question, where would we lose the least amount of money if we decided to go on with the extravaganza or took our losses? Which way did we lose the least amount of money, because it sounds like we're gonna lose money one way or the other? So if we chose one, would we wanna choose one where we lose the least amount of money and never get into that situation again?
Well, I think what we, what we don't have right now is, is how much heads to beds we're making, we don't have, we don't have anything that tells us, yeah, if we lose money here, we're gonna make it over here.
And the other unknown is, are we going to have losses as a result of the cancellations?
That's what I mean, you take that into consideration, you take the cuts, if, if we have to lose on the, on the contract, is that better to lose that money than to go ahead with it and lose fifty thousand, whatever that dollar amount is? We don't know which way it is.
And the other thing, we don't know who else is a sponsor, and there's other sponsors probably.
Well, and what you do with Mr. HEB that's giving you ten thousand, if you go, if you stop it, you give that ten thousand back.
And, and you have a valid point, the other thing is, you know, you can't forecast who's actually coming, you know, that's another thing, you know, you have to go out there and, and do what you need to do, you know.
But I think that's an argument for having professionals in the division to run this event center and to do these things on a professional level and not leave it.
All I can tell you, ma'am, is that the four A board that we had in there was more than adequate to do that. It was a second, right?
No, it's.
What did you just do?
So what?
So what do I now do?
Table it.
It's on a seventeen, isn't it?
Madam Mayor, I think there was some confusion as to what was gonna happen as a result of the vote tabling that, and I'm gonna make the motion that we reconsidered the tablings of item two G. I think on your part and the part of others, the belief was that we were gonna be able to go on and make a just emotion off that was on the floor and given the time constraints of the event, given the time constraints and the desires of the city manager, I, I again want to motion to reconsider.
Is there a second?
Yeah, a second, if I, that's what I understood you to say, that there was gonna be another motion.
See, there was a majority of you that voted to table, that's why the motion to reconsider is now for you.
Since there's a second, I can ask you the question, if we table this and, okay, a second, we reconsider. Can we do that? So when can I speak?
Call the vote, ma'am, call the vote, see if it goes back on the table, if it goes back on the table, then you can discuss. The motion is reconsidered.
Citizens of the Capitol, discussion.
Citizens in time, please.
Thank you. Did you just make a motion? I mean, did you just vote? Okay, thank you. Could you back up just a split second and please clarify council and or Madam Mayor, a motion to table, was it to table the first motion or was it to table this whole agenda item?
The motion's reconsidering now, they opened it back up.
No, the, the motion that, that passed and the reconsideration motion is on the floor because the item got tabled.
The agenda item got tabled.
Correct.
Okay, may I have one more clarification from council? Did we not have a motion prior to that and did that not have to be voted first and either ignored as in not voted for and then that second motion come into play?
Motion to table is preferential, that's what they acted on here.
It is.
But now there's another motion.
Right, reconsider.
Reconsider, it's open again.
Now, back on the table, now you can talk on the item, ma'am, Councilor.
My only concern, I got a little confused here because there's a, I think we were voting on the motel, the financials kind of, but my, my, my thing is, is if Bill Joe calls tomorrow, are you gonna write those checks out and would you use your?
If you, if you do not give me a direction to stop that, this event will go forward.
Okay, your recommendation on the law side and on the city manager, what's your recommendation of this event?
The financials, and how much is it gonna take in hotel motel tax? What was your question?
Your recommendation of this, of this event?
My recommendation is, because this event was approved by the previous council and it's how many weeks away?
Two.
Two, then you move forward and you don't ever wanna do this again, then you tell me after. But if, if you don't give me direction to come to the stop, then I'll stop it and we'll deal with the lawsuit, we'll deal with contracts, the huge, whatever the bill is, that's what we'll have to deal with. You know, we're, we're so far in it because that was a direction and, and I'll make it clear, Mr. Miller and, and Ms. Garlin, we're not part of that, so I can't, I can't tell you how they feel about it or how they felt about it, but the direction that the previous council gave me was you put on those events, this is the third year, like I said, it's not like it's never been done. And the hotel motel tax money, again, and, and a good recommendation by the city secretary is if we get one of the workshops and tell that portion of it so you can hold what the specifics, the specifics of that use for it. I don't consider it a loss if we use X amount of, of money, of hotel tax money for that purpose, because the purpose is to bring people into town, make sure that they stay if, if, in, in the training that I've received on a yearly basis on the hotel motel taxes, if you get one person in that hotel room, you comply. If you've got, because we're that Eagle Ford shell, and the Eagle Ford shell, if those people that stay here regardless, attend that event, you comply. So, yeah, if I don't get a director from you today for your answer, sir, this amendment will go.
Councilman Maronis, interesting point, when he was comparing the dollars and I'm gonna amend my, or restate the motion so that we hopefully continue. An event that loses thirty thousand dollars and brings one person to a hotel, yes, complies with the requirements of law, the point he made, then I think is a very valid one, thirty thousand dollars provided to the visitors and tourists can fund an employee that can be there full-time or maybe a weekend employee, and these are considerations that we as a council have to make. And that is the purpose of the issue, that the, the agenda item is where are we going forward? So as a result, and because the fall fest exists and because some existing events already exist, maybe not to the degree of the holiday extravaganza, and that we will probably begin to be very well informed over the next thirty to sixty days that this can change, okay? I make the motion to direct the city manager to freeze all city expenditures with the exception of those required for essential city services as determined by the city manager and to discontinue the holiday extravaganza for this year.
Now we can have discussion again, legal advice? Mr. Maronis, you're gonna have to settle some things.
Recommendation?
Recommendation is, if the monetary issue is strong for you, vote for it.
With that said, are there any whole harmless agreements in the contract that we let for the people?
No. You'll have to negotiate your way out, settle with those people.
I would just like to say that the historical society has been holding offerings out at the civic center, which have brought a lot of people into this town and has made people aware of our civic center that has not been aware of it before. However, when you are this close to an event and you have contracts already signed or you already have things in place to go forward, even if it's not a very good idea at this time to do that, you better think about, like was mentioned, that if there are contracts that are whole harmers, that you have to pay those contracts, you get suits filed against you, I see no reason why some of those amounts cannot be negotiated, since this was speaking about the contract with some of the people, under the circumstances, it should be an opportunity to talk to them to lower some of those costs due to a low rate, uh, projection. However, at this close a date to the event, it is, it is damaging to the city of Floridale to cancel something that has been advertised and that has people already. About your future use of that event and that event center. And one of the things that needs to be addressed by the four A board, and I think it was talked about a little bit around the area, is that nonprofits should use that free of charge out there so more people from these organizations can be able to know it's out there. And that is a word amount advertisement that you cannot get any other way, but people need to be able to use that center, that if they're nonprofit or free of charge, instead of having this one charge this amount, another one charge that amount, these days get a certain amount, that day gets another amount, and who you are gets another amount, that is not relative to good business in the city. So I really think that at this point, that it should go forward with the discretion of the city manager without freezing any hotel motel tax at this point and then revisit it at another time when you have more information about what you're doing. I mean, this is, this is dragging on, wait a minute.
I just have one question, does anybody, I just have one question, does anybody know how much, like, y'all were talking about heads to beds, well, how many people actually come in from out of town to the holiday extravaganza, or is it mostly attended by locals? Like the barbecue cook-off?
The majority are out of town. There's not too many locals that attend it.
There aren't any rooms, they're all for the local guys. There aren't any rooms to rent.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would, I respect the, I respect Mr. Miller's original motion, original motion without any add-on. There's two reasons, one, Luana just made a very good case why it shouldn't be added, but also adding things to motions at this meeting that are not. But also adding things to motions at this meeting that are not on the agenda is going to get you guys in trouble. You know it, and so don't do it.
I'm going to recite the motion as made.
Do those contracts have any fees to be canceled where you have to pay? Say like if you're going to cancel that event, you have to pay a certain percentage to them if you cancel? Are there any written in the contract?
Of the, the contracts that I reviewed for the entertainers that were provided to me, only one had a default cancellation clause. And that was for Polito and that was the $5,000 fee. He had charged $1,500, had been paid in advance, $3,500 would be payable to him if we did not give him 45 days cancellation notice. And that was in the consideration. Of the other entertainers, there was no cancellation clause, other than the forfeiture of the deposit.
Yes, please. According to our contracts on all three contracts for the performers, we do have to pay the full amount if we cancel. Especially because two weeks, just a two week notice. So all three performers will be paid.
What contracts? Where are those coming from?
Do you have the radio and the part where you just... Yes. On that one, like we read today, the $30,000 for both performers will guarantee. So if we cancel, they get the full amount, which is $8,000. On the Ruben Ramos, he's guaranteed, so he gets the full amount, which is $8,000. On the Gilbert, he is also guaranteed, so he gets the $5,000.
So the motion was canceled by the Anthony Hook, right?
How many tables have they all sold?
Yeah, 45 tables sold. In order to come out, we have $10,000 from HP, we have another $1,500 in sponsorship from Helen and Hoffman Attorneys. We are still waiting on other sponsors to hear from them. And we have 45 tables sold, so we just... The, we have to sell at least 70 tables to come out.
How many?
70 tables. 45. The 70, or even are the 70 put you over? It actually puts us over with the sponsorships.
But the motion already...
So we actually made, if we sell all tables which we have in the past, we will make an additional $25,000.
I understand, but it's a new point that there was three votes, correct?
Two.
Two.
My concern is this card hasn't been given to me because what we showed of 10 tables, we don't have that information.
Can you read the motion back?
The motion that was granted was to direct, I'm sorry, direct the city manager to freeze all city expenditures with the exception of those required for essential city services as deemed necessary by the city manager and to cancel the extravaganza. That was it, and it passed 3-2.
Now we're going to go on to item 2J. How come Mario's...
The decision that council members placed high vacancy, creating by the definition of council...
Mario said, Mario said the information that only 10 tables were sold.
Madam Mayor, you've got information in your practice on this, it's powerful information. My recommendation is this matter be tabled and we're waiting for the responsible secretary of state on the matter.
Based on the recommendation of council, I make the motion to table.
I abstain.
Okay, now the last, not the last, sorry, 2A. Considered an active date, considered leaving, leaving.
I think it was going to be the request of one of the council members that we move to the discussions before we get on the dates or is that...
Well, there's several things that we've learned, we've learned that we need to do a budget workshop for the amending of the budget. We have several items of business to continue to go on. And for at least in the month of December, we need to be looking at meetings at least weekly for the first two weeks and possibly even the scheduling of a budget workshop. But that's certainly dependent upon comptroller and year-end pieces, if that would be appropriate to be doing in the first part of January. So I'm recommending two council meetings, one the first week of December, one the second week of December. And then if needed, a workshop or based on the recommendation I made.
As we, as we spoke, I need the, I need the attention of the entire council, please. As I have spoken with Councilman Miller about that, that is impossible. I believe that the mayor sits on the Mel's floor and they canceled all their meetings for the month of December. We have to take into consideration that December, we have holidays for the Christmas and New Year's. We've got vacations scheduled months in advance where employees have already requested time off to spend with their families. And then more importantly is the comptroller will not be prepared to hold any budget for a show that is doing year-end on that.
That was my point, and my recommendation was just two meetings, one the first week, one the second. Is that still impossible?
It's, it's hard to do, yes, sir.
What would be your recommendations for city council meetings for the month of December?
We pick up, like we always do, because of the issues going on, we have one council meeting in December.
We just have it on the 13th, then we can do the regular schedule. And cancel the second one, the fourth, the...
Correct, you two are being the week of the holiday. Do I have a motion, please?
Sir, I don't think it requires a motion.
I wish that we have one meeting in December, this...
I second that.
So what I'm reading is number 13, we can go on to discussion items. Getting some meetings, getting council meetings. Uh, Mr. Miller?
That we just did.
For...
Yeah, that's what we wanted to talk about in December.
Well, at any point, but we can do in January, we may have to do in January, we're discussing December, I don't think that's a...
And then you go on to item 32, review current council directives, Mr. Rosen.
Madam Mayor, I would ask to review the council directives. We have three directives in effect as of tonight. The first one makes the city manager, the official public information officer for purposes of responding to open record requests. The second one has to do with P and C, B corporations complying with planning and zoning requirements and procedures for any activities where a piece of property is sold directly. That the recipient of that property comply with P and D requirements. And the third one is an item where we adopted the Fledge of Allegiance, all to the Texas Act and to the United States Act. And we need to revise that one before it's formally passed. We did it informally, we haven't signed it, and we need to specify in that it applies to all city meetings. And then the last item that we have, the pending item, is a revision of our presentation from two meetings ago, a meeting ago.
The council directive, it was informally adopted.
Informally adopted, so that we specify how much time citizens are put is going to be allowed if there's going to be a capital. So two are in effect, two are in the process.
You're going to go on to the second one, review the current council directives, do you get to combine this conversation?
Yeah, that was...
A workshop review?
I, I think we've talked about the workshops, the first one was the video training that was received by the council on the Open Meetings Act and the Public Records Act. And I know that there was some questions that I had as a result of it and we wanted to wait till we could get the council with clarification. And the one question I have specifically has to do with council members attending other city public meetings. The way I understood the presentation, if the council members are not participating in the meeting and it is not a city council meeting. Could three council members attend a meeting? Would that be a violation of the Open Meetings Act? Because their participation was the question, if they did not participate in the meeting and three council members would be there, would that be a forum issued?
Okay, there's two parts to the question, the way we counted the forum is four, okay? So three would not make the forum. But assuming you had four there, there is a lawsuit, come to the fourth court of appeals. And the Republican Party lost, and they lost, and it's the Barra Medina Adiscusal Water Control in the Brooklyn District, number one. And they lost because at the meeting, so they made a public presentation on behalf of the district. There was a majority of the WC and ID present. A staffer made the presentation and was considered a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Okay, now here's the answer to your question. You can go to the meeting, but I can't guarantee that somebody will not start a discussion. There's the risk.
Now, is the issue a quorum at the meeting or a majority at the meeting?
No, it's a quorum.
Quorum, so if three council members attended a FEDC members' meeting, that would not be violation. It would take the three members plus the mayor or mayor pro temp.
But the serious issue becomes if you get engaged in that discussion, then you run the risk.
If the quorum exists?
Yes.
Can you bring something else up, Mr. Rosen?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, and I've got that one other item that I'm on for that. Okay, in communication, I'm kind of respecting this to you, Mr. Miller, because you shot one, I'm warning you for information. When we send out emails, please, please be aware of the fact that if you do a reply to all. Now, I'm not saying anybody's done this, but I'm asking you to be aware of it. If you do a reply to all on your magic little telephone, and then somebody makes a response to that, it's a walking quorum violation. And y'all went through that in part in your public sessions. So while all of you are here, I'm asking you to please take note that on that magic little machine there, there's a reply to all or there's a reply. Please use the reply only to one person, in other words, you can communicate to another member and say such and so is true or not true, or I agree or I don't agree. But when you do reply to all, you're going to have a walking quorum problem. And since you've just had the training, I'm just asking you to be sensitive, to don't let your machine automatically go to reply to all.
Are you saying you can discuss agenda to one person?
You can discuss it one-on-one, that's within the law, okay? By making a response, I send a communication to you and you want to send a reply back to me. But I'm asking you not to make a reply to all the councils.
I have to give you $100, but...
And there's nothing that we can do to stop a council member from talking to another council member about a public matter. What the walking quorum is, is not to do it amongst all of you or amongst the majority of you or a whole group. And the only way to prevent that is to not use the reply to all button. I hope that's simple enough.
One question, council?
Yes, sir.
But if one council member goes to each individual, even though it's not a forum, if he goes to each one and says, hey, I'm going to vote on this, what do you think? Hey, I'm going to vote on this, what do you think? That's called polling, isn't it?
That is.
That is a violation.
It's a fine distinction, I'm just trying to tell you electronically, I want you to be aware of that one problem, please.
Council, would you clarify one more time? Quorum is typically, not typically, quorum is a majority of that board, right? So...
But in this particular charter, we've had four to make a forum, and that's what's combined in the charter.
The mayor or the pro temp, three members plus the mayor or mayor pro temp to make a forum, how do you understand that three is a forum?
We've got a charter provision that says that.
That will be four, and that fourth person will be the mayor or the mayor pro temp. So if Councilman Miller, Castillo, Guerrero were there and Gomez walks in, that's not your majority.
That's not a quorum, yes, it's a quorum.
I mean, that's not your, yeah, that's not your quorum. It has to be the mayor or mayor pro temp.
Counselor Guerrero is the mayor pro temp.
I'm sorry, he is.
That would make them a quorum.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I confused. So if it was not him, but it happens to be one of the others, then it'd have to be Guerrero come in or the mayor that walks in, that would make it a quorum, is that true statement?
That's our quorum.
Okay.
That's our quorum. But under state law, a majority is applicable for that act.
So state, so our charter trunts the state law?
No, it's the other way around. Okay, it's confusing, I'm sorry. But for purposes of conducting our meetings, the forum is four. So we can't conduct a meeting without four here being one of those, the mayor pro temp or the mayor. Okay, but for state law, open meetings purposes, a majority is your problem. Two different standards.
And state does not overrule?
Open meetings purposes, state overrules. For quorum purposes, our charter controls.
Right.
My speaking direction?
Thank you.
Any other questions? And now we're going to adjourn.